We'll go ahead and get started. Is there... I was gonna try to jostle the agenda just a bit. So is there anybody here to talk, anybody from the audience, other than the participants that, you know, have entered the, filed the applications, you know, so you're gonna talk about your own property? But is there anybody here that's gonna talk about a property in their neighborhood or a property that they have, you know, knows on the agenda? Is there anybody from the audience that's gonna talk just in general about any of the properties? Okay. So I'm gonna move the agenda around just a little bit. Well, I don't see... John Keppel isn't here yet. So let's go with Scott Lewis. You're here. So, oh, there's John. That's okay. Let's just start with Scott. So we're gonna start with the last one on the agenda. Both these property, both of these, the third and the last one on the agenda, so John Keppel's and Scott Lewis's, this is the second time we've been discussing them, so last month, we all, and if you got the minutes, you can, if you weren't here. Yep, great. So Scott, why don't you... So we have site plan approval, application filed by Scott Lewis seeking approval of site plan for development of a single-family home for the property at 1324 Samuel Avenue, Peoria Heights, pin number noted, which is currently zoned R3. And then a variance application at the same time, seeking lot size variance to allow a 56-25 square foot lot, which is less than the 15,000 required in R3, and allow setback variances to allow a 20-yard front yard setback, which would be in line with the houses, the house directly to the west of it, correct? And a four-foot setback in the side yard, but that's not really four feet, that's seven feet, right, according to the diagrams. So I think the side yard setbacks are moot point. And a 12-foot setback in the rear, which is smaller than required. So everybody was, other than Floyd, everybody was here, went through the process last time with Mr. Lewis. Are there any questions of Mr. Lewis? There's no changes, is that correct?
No, no, we're good.
And it looks like you have like 7.5 on one side in the front, 7.1 on the other side, and then in the back you have like 6.5 and looks to be somewhere around 7 for a side yard setback?
It's 14.5.
Oh, okay, yeah. So none of the side yard numbers should really come into play. I think you're good on the side yard, but you have the 20-foot front yard setback and the 12-foot rear yard setback, which are both under the 25, and I think it's 18 in the back. So are there any other changes to your... Everything else is just as you proposed last time, correct?
Correct, yeah, we haven't changed anything.
Okay. And so does anybody have any questions of Mr. Lewis, based on our knowledge and everybody looked at this, right? Are there any public comments regarding the property at 1324 Samuel? Okay, public comments would be closed at this point. So if that's it, I think what we would need then from the board is a motion... Oh, we'll need to go through the findings of fact. So let's look first at... So you can have a seat. Yeah, thanks. Let's first go through the findings of fact and the recommendation for the special use. Just filling out some paperwork here.
Variance, actually, we should be on the variance form.
Should I do variance first?
Well, the site plan approval, do we use the special use form for the site plan approval?
Mm-hmm. It's site plan, special use, both.
You can take one of the order. I forgot to use the site.
Yeah. So now we're talking about... Let's, we will start with actually the variance, because then we can approve the variances and then we can look at the overall site plan. So the variances requested in this case are a lot size variance of 56-25 and the 20-foot front yard setback and the 12-foot rear yard setback, just as drawn in his site plan.
Which is the same as the one next to it.
Correct. The front and rear are the same, yes. Yep. And the lot size is the same.
Right.
Actually, this lot is slightly bigger than the one next to it, so. I think by 10 feet, this is a 40-foot lot, correct? And the other one was a 30. Okay, so I'll go through these and then we'll go through them and then I'll read it and then we'll go around the horn and each person says either yes or no, they agree or they Will the strict application of the terms of the zoning code related to the use, construction or alternation of buildings or structures, or to the use of the land impose practical difficulties or particular hardship upon the petitioner? So basically, the size of the lot. And so we are doing the variance for lot size first. So will the strict application cause him practical difficulties? Robert?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 If the variation is granted, the property affected by the variation will remain in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code?
Yes.
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 The approval of the variation will not merely serve as a convenience to the petitioner but is necessary to alleviate some demonstrable hardship?
Yes.
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 Can the variation requested by petitioner be granted without substantial detriment to the public good?
Yes.
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 Can the proposed variation be approved without impairing general purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan of the zoning code?
Yes.
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 If the proposed variance involves offense, it does not. So then the second one would be the 20-foot front yard setback. Will the strict application of terms of zoning related to the use, construction or alternation of buildings or structures, or to the use of land impose practical difficulties or particular hardship upon the petitioner?
Yes.
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 If the variation is granted, property affected by the variation will remain in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code?
Yes.
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 The approval of the variation will not merely serve as a convenience to the petitioner but is necessary to alleviate demonstrable hardship?
Yes.
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 Can the variation requested by the petitioner be granted without substantial detriment
to the public good?
Yes.
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 Can the proposed variation be approved without impairing the general purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan of the zoning code?
Yes.
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 And it does not involve offense. And then the third would be the rear setback of 12 foot. Will the strict application of terms of zoning code related to the use, construction or alternation of buildings or structures, or the use of the land impose practical difficulties or particular hardship on the petitioner?
Yes.
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 The variation is granted, the property affected by the variation will remain in harmony
with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code?
Yes.
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 The approval of the variation will not merely serve as convenience to the petitioner but is necessary to alleviate some demonstrable hardship?
Yes.
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 Can variation requested by petitioner be granted without substantial detriment to
the public good?
Yes.
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 You can't go out of turn, Janie.
Can the proposed variation be approved without impairing the general purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan as implemented by the zoning code?
Yes.
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 And it does not approve offense. So, motion to approve the requested variances, all three of those, lot size, 20-foot front yard, 12-foot rear yard.
I'll move.
Is that Robert?
Yes.
So motions made by Robert Tierney and seconded by Janie Bax, subject to the conditions, if any, set forth, which is none. Matt, will you call the roll?
Mr. Tenny?
Yes.
Mr. Wyderman?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Bax?
Yes.
Chairman Pittsle?
Yes.
Mr. Wambacher?
Yes.
Mr. Katie?
Yes.
Mr. Wu?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Eight, zero. Okay. And then flipping over to the site plan. So taking into account the site plan with the already granted variances, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the site plan will not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comforts, or general welfare?
Yes.
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 The special use or site plan will not be injurious to the uses and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity and purposes already permitted, or substantially diminish and impair property values within the neighborhood?
Yes.
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 The establishment of the site plan will not impede the normal and orderly development, improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted?
Yes.
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 Adequate facilities, access roads, drainage, and/or necessary facilities have been and will be provided?
Yes.
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 Adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed to minimize traffic congestion to the public streets?
Yes.
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 If a public use or providing public utility service, non-applicable. Special use of site plan in all other respects conforming to the applicable regulations of the district, except as regulations may be in each instance modified to the recommendation of the zoning board of appeals, including the variances?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Therefore, a motion would be made to approve for the site plan. So motion is made by Mike Wu, seconded by Steve Katie. Call the roll, Matt.
Mr. Tenny?
Yes.
Mr. Wyderman?
Yes.
Mr. Wiggens votes yes. Ms. Bax?
Yes.
Chairman Pittsle?
Yes.
Mr. Wambacher?
Yes.
Mr. Katie?
Yes.
Mr. Wu?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, Scott, you're good to go.
Thank you, guys. You guys want to walk through the line?
I jumped the gun when we started the meeting and didn't do a roll call, so you do a roll call, Matt.
Mr. Tenny?
Present.
Mr. Wyderman?
Here.
Mr. Wiggens is here, Ms. Bax?
Here.
Chairman Pittsle?
Present.
Mr. Wambacher?
Here.
Mr. Katie?
Here.
Mr. Wu?
Here.
We have a call.
Okay. And approval of the minutes for March 15th, 2021, everybody should've got a copy of those in their email. Any questions, changes, admissions, deletions?
Yeah, my name is Tenny, T-E-N-N-E-Y, not Tiny.
Okay. Robert, what was it, Tiny?
T-I-N-Y?
I think there was an extra E in there, but there was a...
Okay.
T-E-N-N-E-Y.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Other than that, any, anything else? All those approving the minutes, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So I think we'll jump to yours, John. So everybody should have this copy here. This is kind of an official findings of fact for the rezoning. So we'll go to that first and do, talk about the rezoning. And then, I guess in general, John, is there any changes to your petition or discussion that we had the last time that are pertinent or that we need to discuss?
I think we discussed it, but it wasn't formally requested, which was the parking variance.
The parking variance, right.
Yes.
Yep. Oh. This one is complete. So, refreshing my memory. So we have the rezoning and then we have a formal variance.
Variance, building height, parking.
Building height and parking, right?
And then the site plan.
Okay. Okay, so does anybody have any other questions other than we discussed? The building height is...
54 feet.
54, correct?
Yes.
And the parking is 1.5 per unit.
Correct, yep.
So those are the two variances that we discussed last time that he's requesting. So any other questions of Mr. Keppel on those variances, on the site plan? We'll go through the rezoning piece here.
So, Mr. Keppel, the way we see this today?
Yes.
The way we find it, it is not, the site plan presents with the setback that is not to code, but the plan would be contingent upon receiving a vacation of that existing, quasi-existing alleyway, is that correct?
Correct. If that's not granted, I would need to ask for a variance on the back path, according to my engineer.
Okay. So I think if there is a motion on this, it will need to have a contingency in this motion to approve the site plan with a vacation ordinance from the village board.
Agree.
Because as this appears, it's not to code as it is.
Right. So that would be the special condition?
Correct. Thank you for that.
Anything else? Okay. So we'll go through on page two of the... So John, you can have a seat.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Are there any public comments regarding the request for the property located on the East Duryea Avenue, two pins at the very end of East Duryea Avenue? Okay, public comments will be closed at this point. So on page two, we have the, kind of the findings of fact for rezoning.
I think the thing to do is go through findings and conclusions, starting on page three.
Oh, I'm sorry.
See if everybody agrees with the...
Okay.
I took each factor and stated what I believe to be the findings at the last meeting. And so we're really seeing if everybody agrees, like paragraph ten, you know, for compatibility, you know, four times the property located immediately adjacent to the east, multiple family, and so forth. Just see if everybody agrees with those findings.
So if everybody takes a minute, reads 10, 11 through 17, 10 through 17?
There were some folks last time that talked, but it was mostly not about that.
I have one. On 13, it's talking about the relative gain, but it talks about the height of the proposed development. Is that really applicable if we're just doing the rezoning right now, or should that
That is more of the variance request than the rezoning request.
That was my effort to address the only concern that I heard, the members of the public spoke up, that to the extent it's burdensome, it's burdensome because of the height and the visibility. So I felt like that was something to at least consider, because it was an issue presented. So these are, this is just my effort to kind of kind of chase them. But what I felt the findings were, you're not married to any of this, this is just my take on it from where I sat. So any of these can be modified to any degree that you feel appropriate.
So this is just memorializing what went down last time?
Exactly.
We voted upon it already.
I think you voted on it, and we just didn't specifically adopt the required findings of fact. And I thought since he's coming back today for the site plan, we might as well make sure we bump it down and have formal findings.
And if you read the non-underlined portion, is kind of the finding...
That's the fact.
That's the fact, right? That's what you're supposed to be looking at. And he just put in underline things that he heard that either addresses those points or don't address.
We're getting close. So any of these, like I said, can be modified to any degree that you guys feel appropriate.
And this will go to the village board tomorrow?
It can't go tomorrow, there's that, a seven-day period for objection, unfortunately. We can take it up, but any meeting after that.
So let's just walk through A through H, or 10 through 17, it's fine too. So the compatibility issues with existing zoning nearby property to the degree that zoning districts are compatible with the existing land uses, does anybody have a problem with compatibility of changing this, rezoning this? We'll just kind of go around, make sure everybody verbalizes.
I think the rezoning would make it more compatible, yes.
Yes.
Yes, it's good.
I think yes.
Yes?
It looks good, yes.
Okay. And then to the extent which property values are diminished by particular zoning restrictions. So it's talking about the value of the neighboring properties. Is there any issue with that?
No. No issues.
No.
No?
No.
The extent to which the ordinance promotes and the health and safety morals of general welfare of the public, potential impact on rezoning, the public welfare?
No issues.
No. None.
None? The relative gain to the public as opposed to the hardship imposed on any individual property owner, does the rezoning provide gain to the public which offsets hardships imposed on the property owner?
I think the rezoning would provide gain. So yes.
Yes. Yeah, it helps this neighborhood, so.
Yes.
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 The suitability of the project for, the suitability of the subject property for the zoned purposes, are there features of property which favor either current or proposed zoning district? So changing it from I to R3 really is, I mean, there's just no I development that I could see going in there in the first place, so.
Yeah.
Right.
The length of time the property has been vacant as zoned, considering the context of the land development in the area, the vicinity, and the subject of the property, it was vacant for a significant period of time because of I, right, so, and the size of it.
No issues.
Matt, good with that?
Yeah, great. I'm good with that.
Yes.
The care with which the community has undertaken as planned in its use and development?
No issues. No issues. None. It's fine.
Okay. And then evidence or lack of evidence of the community need for the proposed petitioner, you know, providing more residential housing in the village?
No issues.
No issues. None.
Okay.
This is helpful, though, just to find it out, it's so nice.
Okay, so in general, we'd need a motion to approve the rezoning of this specific pin, which is 14-22-327-017, from I to R3, that's industrial, two, R3, multiple-family residential.
I'll move to rezone that pin from I to R3.
Okay.
And can we include in that motion to adopt the findings of fact as presented?
And I will.
I think everybody said that, so.
And I'll include the adoption of the findings of fact.
Okay, unanimous. Okay, Matt made a motion, anybody second?
Second.
Floyd? So, Matt, call the roll.
Mr. Tenny?
Aye.
Mr. Wyderman?
Aye.
I vote aye. Ms. Bax?
Aye.
Chairman Pittsle?
Aye.
Mr. Wambacher?
Aye.
Mr. Katie?
Aye.
Mr. Wu?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. And then... Okay, and then on to the findings of fact for the variances requested. So we'll go with the height variance first. Well, the strict application in terms of zoning code related to the use, construction, or alternation of buildings or structures, or to the use of the land, proposed practical difficulties, or particular hardship upon the petitioner.
No.
No.
In order to approve this, you need to invoke the statute. Sometimes it gets confusing with the variance rate.
So this is, well, the strict application of the height variant, of the height in that district, which is 44 feet, I believe. Construction or alternation of the buildings or structures, or to the use of land, posed practical difficulties on the petitioner. Still say no?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
If the variation is granted, the property affected by the variation will remain in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code.
No.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
The approval of the variation will not merely serve as a convenience to the petitioner, but is necessary to alleviate some demonstratable hardship on the petitioner.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Can the variation requested by the petitioner be granted without substantial detriment to the public good?
No.
Yes.
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 And can the proposed variation be approved without impairing the general purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan as implemented on zoning code?
No.
Yes.
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 And it does not involve offense. And 1.5 parking spots per unit. Will strict application in terms of zoning code related to the use, construction, or alternation of the buildings or structures, or land use impose practical difficulties or particular hardship upon the petitioner?
No.
Yes.
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 If the variation is granted, the property affected by the variation will remain in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code.
No.
Yes.
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 The approval of the variation will not merely serve as a convenience to the petitioner, but is necessary to alleviate some demonstrable hardship on the petitioner.
No.
Yes.
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 Can the variation requested by the petitioner be granted without substantial detriment to the public good?
No.
Yes.
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 Can the proposed variation be approved without impairing the general purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan implemented in the zoning code?
No.
Yes.
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 Okay, does not approve offense. So motion to approve the request for the variances, the 54-foot height and the 1.5 parking spots per unit.
We should probably take several votes on each variance, because there were some objections.
Okay.
I think everybody's going to say yes, but let's go twice.
Okay.
So first building height, then-
We'll do building height then first. Motion for the building height to be approved. Does anybody make that motion? Mike Wu? Second?
I'll second.
And the conditions would be the vacation of the rear alley?
I think that would be, we'll wait to the site plan.
On the site plan? Okay. Okay. Matt, call the roll.
Mr. Tinney?
Aye.
Mr. Wyderman?
Yes.
Ms. Bax?
Yes.
I vote yes. Chairman Pitzel?
Yes.
Mr. Wambacher?
Yes.
Mr. Cady?
Yes.
Mr. Wu?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then the 1.5 parking spots per unit, need a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Steve, Cady, are you second?
Oh.
Call the roll.
Mr. Tinney?
Aye.
Mr. Wyderman?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Bax?
Yes.
Chairman Pitzel?
Yes.
Mr. Wambacher?
Yay.
Mr. Cady?
Yes.
Mr. Wu?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Okay, so for the site plan, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the site plan will not be detrimental or endanger the public health, morals, comforts, or general welfare.
No.
Yes.
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 The special use, I'm sorry, the site plan will not be interest to the uses and enjoyment of a property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminished in property values within the neighborhood to which it is located.
No.
Yes.
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 The establishment of the special use or site plan will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district.
Yes.
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 Adequate facilities, access road drainage, and/or necessary facilities have been or will be provided.
Yes.
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 Adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress egress as designed to minimize traffic congestion to the public streets.
No.
Yes.
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 If public or that a utility. The site plan in other respects conformed to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located, except as regulations may in each instance be modified pursuant to the recommendation of the Zoning Board of Appeals, which would be the two variances.
Yes.
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 Okay, a motion to approve the site plan with the condition that the rear alley be vacated by the village. So a motion? Anybody? Floyd? And seconded by? Mike? Any other discussion? Matt, call the roll.
Mr. Tinney?
No.
Mr. Wyderman?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Bax?
Yes.
Chairman Pitzel?
Yes.
Mr. Wambacher?
Yes.
Mr. Cady?
Yes.
Mr. Wu?
Yes.
Motion carries.
What's the date today for 19?
Okay, John? You got the rezoning and the site plan and the variances. The site plan will go to the Village Board?
Not tomorrow, but-
Not tomorrow, but the next meeting.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So Chris and Monica Chandler want to step up, seeking variance setback to allow construction of the garage and porch in addition, with a one-foot setback in the side yard and a 20-foot setback in the front yard, which is less than required. So if you want to, these are, for those of you following along, it's these two large drawings, correct? We got those. One's the proposed and one's the existing. So you want to walk us through what we're looking at here and what your hardship is?
Basically, we have a carport, like a metal carport on the side of our house. And we want to tear that down and replace it with a garage. Basically exactly where it is right now. And then the reason to go out front is because we want to put like a breakfast nook off of the existing kitchen. Therefore, we have to push the garage out a little more for, to allow a car to park in front of that area. And then the variance, it shows on here 20 feet from the property line. Our property line is actually 10 feet in from the existing curb. We have like an extremely wide easement or right-of-way there. So it actually will be like 30 feet from the curb itself. We have like 10 feet of yard that is actually not our property.
So aesthetically, it'll look like there's a lot more space there because of the right-of-way of the existing road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then how does it line up with, how does it line up with the houses, you know, and adjacent going down the road?
If you head north, there's probably two to maybe three houses that have bump outs off of them. There's one way down at the corner. Used to be the Hosensteins. They have a really big one off of theirs, which is-
So it's generally in line, and we're talking-
Generally, yeah. There are a lot of like porches and bump outs that stick out in front of the-
We're basically talking the difference of like three feet?
Yeah, because our overhang is actually, our house right now is like 23 and a half feet from the property line. And then the side yard is, like I said, it's basically just replacing the existing carport that is there already.
And then the side yard, the 1.6, it's 1.6 today to the carport, but it'll be one foot.
Right, yeah.
So basically, it's six inches probably for the wall.
Right, basically, like a concrete block is what we're thinking, to get the full 12-foot for the width of the inside of the garage.
Anybody have any questions or comments for?
For this part, you have labeled storage. Is that going to be part of the door, or is that going to be part of your siding of your house?
That'll be part of the garage. So like if you open the garage door to the left, there'll just be a little bump out.
A little nook, so it doesn't have a door on it, it's just a little-
Right, yeah. Basically-
So there's not a man door there?
No, not, not right now, no. I mean, not in the plans, no.
Rick, did we get any correspondence from the neighbors, or any objections from anyone around the vicinity, or anything like that?
No, and I was just going to ask, is there anybody in the audience, public comments for this property? Okay. So no, no, and, you know, I talked to Sarah and Dustin today about it, and they haven't heard, you know, nobody's come to them, and-
I have spoke to a few of my neighbors and the immediate neighbor to the side of this, and that's Rosie Little. She has zero issues with it.
Oh, that's Little's Sliver Creek City?
Yeah, yeah. Basically, their house is like 13 feet from the property line right now. So it's still going to be 14 feet away from our
Yeah.
proposed structure.
And this is adding like a full garage, so this makes this, makes property value go up?
Yeah, yeah. Plus, we want to also put a double driveway in, because we have to park two vehicles on the street currently. We'd like to be able to not park those on the street.
Get it.
Yes.
Newbie question, is that a separate discussion? The width of the driveway?
No.
Okay.
The driveway, really, there's no, there's nothing in the zoning code. The driveway can go like right up to the property line, because it's a, it's not a structure per se, right? Even though it's attached to the ground.
It's moving in, so I didn't think there would be an issue, but I just wanted to check.
From a tax perspective, he'll pay more taxes, because he'll have just FYI, I don't know if you knew that.
We've lived there for like 17 years, so we've been waiting to hopefully add on to this.
They measure anything that's not impervious.
Any other questions? Okay, appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you.
And if there's no public comments, public comments will be closed. Okay, so. So we have the for the property, 4916 Glen Elm. That'd be the south side, eh? Okay. So the strict application in terms of zoning code related to the use, construction, alternation of the buildings and structures pose practical difficulties or particular hardship upon the petitioner?
Yes.
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 I'm sorry, if you didn't know, this was for the 20-foot front. The variation is granted, the property affected by the variation will be, will remain in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code.
Yes.
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 The approval of the variation will not merely serve as a convenience to the petitioner, but is necessary to alleviate some demonstrable hardship on the petitioner.
Yes.
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 Can the variation requested be granted without substantial detriment to the public good?
Yes.
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 Can the proposed variation be granted without impairing the general proposed and intent of the comprehensive plan as implemented by the zoning code?
Yes.
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 And it is not offense. Excuse me. And then variance number two, 1.6-foot south side yard setback, as opposed to the, I'm sorry, did I do that wrong? Yeah, it is. It's one foot as opposed to the 1.6-foot currently there. Will strict application of the terms of the zoning code related to the use, construction, or alternation of the buildings or structures, or to the land use impose practical difficulties or particular hardship on the petitioner?
Yes.
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 The variation is granted, the property affected by the variation will remain in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code.
Yes.
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 The approval of the variation will not merely serve as a convenience to the petitioner, but is necessary to alleviate some demonstrable hardship on the petitioner. but is necessary to alleviate some demonstrable hardship on the petitioner?
Yes.
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 Can the variation requested by the petitioner be granted without substantial detriment to the public good?
Yes.
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 Can the proposed variation be approved without pairing the general purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
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 And it does not include a fence. Motion to approve the request for variances. So I need a motion? Motion. Motion by Janie. Second by Mike Wu. No conditions. Any other discussion? Matt, call her on. Mr. Tenny?
Aye.
Mr. Weiderman?
Aye.
I vote aye. Ms. Bass?
Aye.
Chairman Pitzel?
Aye.
Mr. Wahlbacker?
Aye.
Mr. Katie?
Aye.
Mr. Wu?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. Chris, everything good? Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Okay, we're down to the last piece of paper. I may need to borrow somebody. Finding the fact that I don't have it all in here. Thank you. Okay. Variance application filed by Sarah Legal. Did I say that right? Legal? Seeking approval of a fence variance to allow construction of fence with a seven-foot setback instead of the required ten-foot setback at the height not to exceed six feet, which is two feet higher than the... Not to exceed six feet, which is two feet higher than the maximum allowed set forth in D.U.N. Village Code for the property located at ten-twenty-two East Highland Place, which property is currently zoned R1 residential. You want to come up and, I think we have your drawing here.
Can I do the pocket?
I live there as well.
Yeah, you can.
Sure. Yeah, yeah.
Good, he knows.
Thanks for asking.
So is everybody familiar with this product, this, this property? This is a crazy, crazy lot. But...
No privacy.
Yeah, it's very interesting.
Just so everybody understands, there's a number of different ways you could view this. Front yard, back yard, side yard, whatnot. I'm calling it a corner because it's two streets intersect, okay? That's the best I can, I think, the most comfortable under the circumstances. So it, it messes around with what's front, what's back, what's side. You ever really had front, back, side yards like a traditional lot because of the way it's positioned?
No, they have all front yard and a little bit of side yard.
This is not a front yard. That's my point. My point in all that is not a front yard fence, that it shouldn't be...
Well, I don't know about that, Mark. In the code itself, it says that if, it doesn't matter which side of the house is adjacent to a road, it's a front yard.
Unless it's a corner lot.
And that's, that's even more restrictive than...
Well, so that's where we came up with the four feet. Well, I don't, I don't, I...
Either way you do it, I think you're going to have to either grant them a front yard fence and the variances that apply to that, or you don't. I, I mean...
But it doesn't, the fence does not go past the front line of the house, which faces Highland.
Yes, yes.
If it's a front yard, it would be Highland.
Yes, yes.
The fence doesn't go past the front line.
We've done this a thousand times on corner lots, and it doesn't matter whether the front yard faces a street, whether your front door faces a street.
But every time we had that, the fence was in front of the front line of the house. And this fence comes off the front corner of the house and goes... You following?
I, I follow you, but I, I'm respectfully disagreeing. I, I say that they have two front yards. Just because their back door is, faces Highland, and that's what they call their back door, it's the front of their house. It's, it, the, the code is pretty specific, and I was just going to look it up to find it, but I was pretty sure that the, the code says it regardless of, of where, where your front address is, if your structure faces a street, that is considered front yard from the property line to the structure.
Okay, and on this one, no part of the fence is in what is legally defined as a front yard?
On the back, on the kingman side, it would be because they're coming off their house, off their deck.
That's what makes this so unique is that it's kingman in the back and even though those streets intersect because they run at angles, it's not the side of the house faces one street, the front of the house faces another. It's the back faces one street and the front faces another.
Correct.
So, I don't...
I believe it's a front yard fence. I mean, that's, that's the way I interpret it, I guess. And we can, but why don't we let you go ahead and, and tell us what you want to do and then others can ask questions?
So you can see on there, we have the existing deck that's, that's there. And obviously, like I said, we have no privacy. And technically, you guys own the lot past us?
The village does.
The village does, yes. They own the, the lot facing east of where we want it. But we have a back door that comes out on the south side corner, just between the deck and the end of the house there. And our purpose for this is we have dogs. So we're hoping to come off of the deck and come past the, the, basically at the angle of, that the street runs. Yeah, parallel to the street, over to the property line, and then down, down towards the, be the north, and then back to the west to the house, not going any further than the front of the house on the street that faces Highland.
So the fence is for...
It's for, we have three dogs.
For the dogs?
Yes. So we were hoping to come off the deck and just basically run parallel with the street, straight down to the property line, just so we can get our dogs out the back door in a fenced-in area.
Otherwise, it'd kind of be pointless to not have...
Yeah, if we put the fence the way they're saying that we, you know, to code-wise, then we'd have to, still have to take them out the door and turn and go in and back into the fence, which is kind of defeats the purpose for us. And like, the only reason why we're, we're asking for the six foot is because we have, our, the house already sits up like five, it's like a steep hill on each side. It sits like five or feet off the, the ground or off the road already. So when we sit in the yard, I mean, there's absolutely, we're in the middle of, of everyone and we have zero privacy. And we just figure with the dogs out there barking and everything else that we'd just like to have a little bit of privacy.
And they won't bark as much. People walking by, a lot of walkers, home runners and...
And so what is the, that's, what's, that's the reason for the six foot versus four foot?
Yeah, we were just hoping for just a little bit of privacy because we sit up already as it is. And there's a ton of traffic that walks by and our dogs, dogs bark at everyone.
And what do you envision as far as privacy? What do you envision this fence being made up?
Oh, it's a, it would be a six by eight, pressure-treated, or pressure-treated dog-eared wood fence. Basically, your common wood, dog-eared fence, the six by eight panels. It'd be from Menards.
Okay. And it'll be, no, it, there'll be some opening between those boards?
There, it will, there is no opening and it's just a solid, solid fence.
So this, this is where it becomes an issue for, because honestly, you gotta grant a variance whether it's front yard or corner lot.
I agree.
If you construe it to be front yard, then it's got to be forty percent open.
So, so here's the definition of a front yard in the code. Where a lot is located such that the rear and front lot lines, each above a street or right-of-way, or the nearest shoreline or high water or stormwater, both such yards shall be classified as front yards. And that's their front and their rear lot lines, both above a street.
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah.
Pretty darn clear to me anyhow, as far as the definition of a front yard. So, but you're right, Mark. Either way we look at it, we have to grant them a front yard and we have to grant them the forty percent open and the six foot. That would be the three pieces of variance.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but it says on here that we're asking to be seven foot instead of ten. We're not asking for that. We'll be, we'll be almost thirteen feet off of the property line.
So you're going to go even with the deck?
Yes, sir.
Here, it shows it coming out further, but you're going to go even with it.
We just want to come straight off of the deck.
I wonder about that because the one that you sent...
No, wait, it, no, we want to just come just straight off the corner of the deck.
Yeah, so it's more like...
Yeah, we were going to, but I said, we don't want to mess with that.
It's more like this, this one then, is that?
Yes, sir.
Right, the, you can come up here.
Basically, a triangle and a square put together?
Yeah.
Yes, that is exactly what we want.
Right, and that, that, those two there?
Yes.
Right, this one, where you're coming over and you go square then?
Yes, sir.
Are you going to have a gate anywhere in the fence or is it going to be fully closed?
Yes.
Which side?
We'll have, we'll have a gate on the, on, on both sides, front and, and back. Like, so basically, there'll be a gate that would face each, each street.
So like next to the deck in the back and then...
And then, and on the front side by the, kind of right up by the house.
Okay.
Just so there's access on either side if we're back there going from one way or the other around the house.
So we have a six-foot tall solid fence that'll run off the deck?
Yes, sir.
And how, how close, you said it's, it's not going to be right up on the property line, so...
It'd be, it'd be thirteen feet from, from the, from the...
So if I'm driving my vehicle on this corner lot, I'm going to be able to see approaching traffic?
Oh, absolutely. There's a, there's a whole entire lot. I don't know exactly how, I, I would say it's a hundred, maybe a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy feet before you actually get to the stop sign because of the way that the pie is set up, the, the Village Jones, that... So yeah, you, there's, it wouldn't affect any traffic whatsoever.
Um, yeah, if you look at their, their lot and then how far out the triangle goes, it's... We're not going to run into that issue we had. No, it's, it's like nowhere, their lot line that, this rounded, you know, this rounded portion of their lot line, I mean, the triangle goes way out here.
I've got all that open area for you.
Which I think is at that corner, we're talking about that wheel, the Village Jones. This is that corner, right up here.
Let me ask you, how tall was the, the deck? The lattice work on the deck?
Uh, it's, it's every bit of, the lattice work goes probably ten feet maybe? Yeah, that's solid lattice, I would say ten feet.
And, um, looking at the, at the, what you provided and just looking at Google Maps here, will the gate that comes around the side yard, I guess we'll call it for our purposes, will the trees be inside that or...
The trees will be just inside of it.
So, okay, so, so, okay, I'm seeing it, okay.
Yeah.
Basically, there's the big tree on, on the Village's lot and then our three trees are there and it'll basically cut right between those. Yes, sir.
Okay, right between them, okay.
So if you were to have spaces in between your panels, how hard would that be for you? Is that doable, like with the fence that you want to get to have space in between the panels? Slash, can your dogs get out? I don't know how big your dogs are.
We have a little bitty dog and we have a medium dog and we have a big dog.
I understand. So you're saying like to have in between the panels? Some space in between the panels, yes. We just have a lot of bikers, runners.
It would be a problem.
It would be a problem. The school kids' track team runs up and down and I mean, they just... So they're like friends? Yeah.
The friends that bark a lot.
Yeah. I just think it would be a lot calmer for them to not see it because they won't... Yeah.
That's really the whole purpose is just because they bark so much. There's so much foot traffic on both sides of our house.
Totally, I get it. I'm asking totally, getting it for variance reasons and space, and just so I understand how big the dogs are. Because a big dog is not a problem, a little dog could be a problem. Okay, gotcha.
But your property does slope up, right? So it's like about a, at least a three foot from the road, from the road, right? So...
So when you're driving, it's not like...
No, so that's what I'm saying. So if you have like a, a four-foot fence, it's going to be like a ten-foot fence in the first place because it's going to be four feet from the road and then four feet high.
Just our big dog will be able to hop up on it and be able to see over it and stuff when he gets up on it. As, as what we're concerned about is the big dog being able to jump and still be able to see people. This was the whole purpose of the six foot. Because we have a big, a small and a medium dog. That, that's really our only, otherwise, a four-foot would be fine, but we're just afraid that the big dog is going to be jumping up on top of it.
And the whole yard goes up as a hill, so if you build this fence, it's still going to be, like fence at the top will be here, streets down here is your house, going to be a little bit too, so it's still going up?
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
So is the yard still going up to the house, so you're going to be cutting into the hill?
No.
Okay.
No, 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 it's...
It pretty goes, it pretty much goes up and then kind of...
Basically, it'll, it goes straight up about this high in about a three-foot span. And then, it goes, then there'll be, there's going to be three foot of flat, basically, just enough pretty much, you can, we can mow the, still mow a nice flat before the hill on, on the outside of the fence.
And you also, if I'm correcting if I'm wrong, for the different dogs to step over it, so even if it's lower than the street, it looks better, the four-foot fence, but for their dogs, they want to hire, so they don't step over it.
That's the whole, that's the, the sheer purpose of the fence is for the dogs.
It's a privacy fence for your dogs.
Pretty much.
We're asking a lot of them. It's their house, we just live there.
Yeah, yeah.
Are they helping building the fence?
Better.
I'm sure they'll be in the way.
Yeah.
But I mean, I, that's what I do for a living is I do concrete and fences and decks, I have my own business, so it will be done properly, I mean, I...
Okay.
Are there any public comments on this?
We have asked all of our neighbors and they, not every one of them said that they don't have zero problem with it.
Public comments will be closed at this point. Okay, does anybody have any other questions for... You all good? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody get any special use, I need the variance. Oh. No, I have the, it's not a special use, it's a, it's a variance, the variance one.
We should probably tackle both of them. Two variants because you have height.
We got three.
Open the...
Height, open this in front, yeah.
Well, right, but, yeah, I guess the front yard itself is a...
Its own variance. And we're okay as far as, as far as all of that is concerned, as far as notice and...
I am, I think there's two ways to do it, but to me, the fact that it's a corner lot trumps the fact that it's a front yard. You can't treat this as a front yard fence without reading out of code the specific requirements for corner lot fences. At the end of the day, it really doesn't matter. The only issue that isn't an issue with corner, corner lot fences is the openness. So if we handle, and I'm fine with taking it as front yard fences, so if we handle the openness issue, so it's, it's three variances it's set to, is the difference. The height is the same thing in four feet, so that's a variance. And then, I guess, for clauses, the front yard fence, lap itself requires variance, even if it was only four feet and forty percent open. feet and 40% open.
So, uh, we have three variances, first one we'll go through is, so we'll do the findings of standards for variations for front yard fence, six foot height of a fence and will not be 40% open, so those will be the order we do those in. Okay, will the strict application of terms of zoning code related to the use, construction or alternation of buildings or structures or to its land use impose practical difficulties or particular hardship upon the petitioner for a front yard fence?
Yes.
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 If the variation is granted, the property affected by the variation will remain in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code?
Yes.
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 The approval of the variation will not merely serve as a convenience to the petitioner but is necessary to alleviate some demonstratable hardship on the petitioner?
Yes.
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 Can the variation requested by petition be granted without substantial detriment to the public good?
Yes.
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 Can the proposed variation be approved without impairing the general purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan as implemented by the zoning code?
Yes.
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 Uh, the variance involves a fence, will the fence conform to the standards set forth in subsections of the zoning code? So it's the subsection on front yard fences, so, um, uh, so this is for a front yard fence, so, um, if the proposed variance involves a fence, will the fence conform, uh, with the standards set forth at subsections? So it's gonna be the four foot and six foot. So I don't know, two.
You gotta consider it in line with the other variance requests.
That's what I mean, so I think we do that one at the end just once and then.
Subject to granting the other variance.
Yep. Uh, okay, so that was the front yard fence. Uh, number two is the six foot height. Will the strict application of the terms of zoning code relating to the use, construction or alternation of buildings or structures or use of the land impose practical difficulties or particular hardship upon the petitioner?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
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 If the variance is granted, the property affected by the variation will remain in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
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 The approval of the variation will not merely serve as a convenience to the petitioner but is necessary to alleviate some demonstratable hardship on the petitioner?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
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 Can the variation requested by the petitioner be granted without substantial detriment to the public good?
Yes.
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 Can the proposed variation be approved without impairing the general purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan as implemented by the zoning code?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
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 Okay, and so then the, the fence will not be 40% open. Will the strict application of terms of zoning code related to the use, construction or alternation of buildings or structures or the use of the land impose practical difficulties or particular hardship on the petitioner?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
If the variation is granted, the property affected by the variation will remain in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
The approval of the variation will not merely serve as a convenience to the petitioner but is necessary to alleviate some demonstratable hardship on the petitioner?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
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 Can the variation requested by the petitioner be granted without substantial detriment to the public good?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Can the proposed variation be approved without impairing the general purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan as implemented by the zoning code?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 And so then overall, if the proposed variance involves a fence, will the fence conform with the standards set forth at subsections, blah, 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 blah? The sections for front yard fence 10 Ford 7 D2C through D2C5.
Is this contingent upon the other ones?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
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 Okay.
I think this is really interesting. So we do need to ask for a motion to approve these, we're gonna take them all separately and we're gonna take them in the same order that you did the findings.
Yep.
So we'll start with asking for a motion to approve the variance to allow a front yard fence.
Yep.
Generally speaking.
Yep. That's exactly what I was gonna, that's exactly how I was gonna do it, so.
Yep.
Okay.
We wanna make sure we're on the same page.
But I, I also, and I'm sorry, Rick, uh, so some of those findings of facts came in at 4/4.
I know.
Uh, Mr. Tenny said if things are contingent upon all of the other things being equal, so we have some findings of facts that work past, correct?
Correct. I, I think that it's okay for the board to say, you can have a front yard fence, but it can't be 60 high and it can't be a complete privacy because it's gotta be at least 40% open. So with, with that being the case, I think it makes sense to first vote, are we gonna allow a front yard fence on this lot? In any way, even if it was a four foot wrought iron, you know, War Memorial fence.
And I would say if all of the ones for a particular variance were tied, then you can see how that one, one time would fail, but as a var, as a variance motion, each one could be voted as a yes, I think. If, maybe, maybe or maybe not, but we'll see.
This is why you don't go to law school.
Tell me about it. Okay, so, front yard fence, front yard fence.
I don't know.
Okay, Janie, Bax, and seconded by Robert, is that correct? Robert Tenny?
Yes.
Okay, Matt, call the roll.
Mr. Tenny?
Aye.
Mr. Wyman?
Yes.
Mr. Weigand, yes? Ms. Bax?
Yes.
Chairman Pitzel?
Yes.
Mr. Wambacher?
Aye.
Ms. Katie?
Aye.
Mr. Wu?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Um, the, number two, the six foot height. Got a motion and a second for the six foot height?
No motion.
Motion by Jack.
Second.
Weideman. Second by Floyd Wambacher. To make some amendments to these forms, you have not enough room to write. Okay, Matt, call the roll.
Mr. Tenny?
Aye.
Mr. Wyman?
Yes.
I vote aye. Ms. Bax?
Yes.
Chairman Pitzel?
Nay.
Mr. Wambacher?
Aye.
Ms. Katie?
Nay.
Mr. Wu?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So now it's a tricky one, 40% open. Um, do I have a motion to approve the, um, the fence that will not be 40% open?
I'll move. I'll second.
Okay, Matt, call the roll.
Mr. Tenny?
Aye.
Mr. Wyman?
Aye.
I vote nay. Ms. Bax?
I vote aye.
Chairman Pitzel?
Nay.
Mr. Wambacher?
Aye.
Ms. Katie?
Nay.
Mr. Wu?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, uh, you can get your fence permit, mm, probably as soon as tomorrow or the next day.
Thank you very much.
Uh, yeah, free to go. Um, the only thing, there's a couple of, uh, items coming up in the next few months, um, and one of them will be the property right over here on, uh, the corner of Grandview Drive and Prospect, um, the, uh, I can't remember their names, but it's the corner, the big corner house, right, faces out. Um, they're looking to put a side yard, which would be a front yard fence, on the Grandview Drive side, coming off of their house towards Grandview Drive. Um, they're proposing a stone cornered, you know, to match their house with wrought iron in between, but, uh, as soon as we have all the particular, I think we just got all the, the petition and everything today wrapped up on that, so you should be getting that in your email and you can go out and take a look at that. Um, and it seems like there's, um, oh, yeah, there's one other one coming up, which will be the infamous, uh, car lot on.
That's it again?
On, on War Memorial Drive.
Again?
Yes, got a new guy, new guy wants to sell cars there. Um, so just FYI on that one, I asked, um, because we have so many new members and, you know, it was hard for me today just walking through what the person wants to do, what, what we asked last time of them, uh, so, so this is the car lot on War Memorial Drive in like Atlantic, I think. Um, it's, you can drive, Vincent? Vincent, yeah, 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 you're right, Vincent. Um, you can drive by it, it's been an empty car lot for a while and then, uh, in the last two years, we prob, we've had.
Two or three times.
Two or three, at least two petitions, I think maybe three, but at least two petitions for a special use, any special use for the car lot. Um, I've asked Sarah to pull the minutes from those sections of the meeting and distribute that with the information, so at least you can read through the old minutes and kinda see what the issues and what the, um, questions were. You know, off the top of my head, there was a lot of questions around lighting, signage, um, and everyone to put a real sign, lights or, and then hours of operation, we had, that was one of the ones that the, um, neighborhood really kinda were a little bit up in arms with, because they had, said they had, at one point, one of the people that ran the car lot had, you know, transports coming at nine o'clock at night and unloading cars and, and then the other thing to me that's always been an issue with this place to me is the, the structure on there is an old garage and that's it. There's no bathroom, there's no sinks, there's no utility, it's, it's, it's like, uh, hey, I have a shed that I'm running a, uh, car lot out of, so it's always been a problem with me, but there, we do not, and I do not think, I don't think we have anything in the building codes or the business codes that says you have to have those things, but from a special use, um, there's a number of things that you can look at from a car lot perspective, so, um.
That building does, it does have water, I'm not sure what, struck, what was inside.
Yeah, I, I think you're right, I think the last guy said that there was a sink, that there actually was a sink there, but, um, there's no, there's no bathroom.
Has the property owner changed, is it still Gary?
Still Gary.
Okay, it's just another.
Just another guy wanted to use the lot.
Another guy.
So anyhow, that, those two are the next two coming up in May, I think that's the only ones we've had so far, but we have until, I think, next Friday at, uh, is it next Friday or this Friday at five o'clock to get other ones? I think it's this Friday. Pretty sure it's this Friday. Okay, thanks everyone.
Rick, this will be my last.
Oh, that's right. Matt, outgoing Matt, and so the next meeting, um, unfortunately, we're going to have to ask somebody to, you know, raise their hand, volunteer to take minutes.
Unfortunately, it's quite an honor.
Matt, Matt stepped up and has done just a phenomenal job.
I wasn't anticipating.
Other than he can't spell Robert's last name. I think he can't spell Robert's last name, but other than that, um, the, the other thing is, I think we'll be talking about a replacement for Matt by the next meeting maybe, um, I think they're looking at appointing somebody, so anyhow, um, between that, this, whoever this new person may be, and then Robert and Floyd, I'd like to meet with you just on the side and make sure that you know, and, um, we have a, uh, have a Google site that has like some documents on it, stuff that you guys can use and it comes in handy to just jump out there and it's got the maps and the, and the code and some of that stuff that you can search easily, so, um, we'll do a little training session either before the next meeting or right before the next meeting or something, so you guys can get that. And then, uh, yeah, so if anybody really feels strongly about taking minutes, um, and wants to do that, I'm hoping that somebody does, um, Matt might even sell you his little record, I'm just kidding.
I may just show up and do minutes.
Okay, uh, other than that, any other business? Anybody have anything?
I think that was a promise.
No, that was not, not a campaign promise.